Good evening and welcome to this candidate forum for the Saratoga Union School District. This webinar forum is being sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Southwest Santa Clara Valley, which covers the cities of Campbell, Los Gatos, Monteserino, and Saratoga. The League of Women Voters is a national organization that provides nonpartisan voter services and does not endorse or oppose any political party or candidate. But we do advocate when we have studied an issue such as education and have developed a position statement on it. This webinar is being recorded and will be posted on our league's website and other social media sites. My name is Eleanor Yick, current president of the League of Women Voters of Southwest Santa Clara Valley and the moderator for tonight's forum. I am pleased to welcome and introduce the candidates who are running for the C open seat on the Saratoga Union School District Board. There are five candidates running for the one open seat. Candidates, please put on your video now. Thank you. Again, the candidates are campaigning for the one open seat and they will be introduced in alphabetical order. So I'd like to introduce the candidate Scott Adler. You might want to wave. I'm sure everybody will know who you are. Cecil Cohen Jonathan, thank you. Melissa Stennis, thank you Melissa. Sanita Verna Verma, thank you. And Azida Weber, thank you. The candidates will make their opening statements in reverse alphabetical order. After the opening statements, the candidates will respond to questions in a randomized order. Candidates, we so appreciate your willingness to participate in this virtual forum tonight. Before we begin, I would like to highlight some ground rules the candidates have agreed to observe during this forum. The league supports the accepted norms of civil discourse. And in that light, the candidates have agreed to follow that norms that were outlined in a document that they received. For example, candidates have agreed not to interrupt each other and to follow the allotted response times. Candidates are reminded that they don't have to use the full time allotment, but are requested not to exceed the allotted time. This forum is scheduled to last approximately one hour. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to introduce her or himself by specifically answering this question in their opening statement. What qualifies you specifically to be a Saratoga Union School District trustee for a four-year term? Our timer for tonight's forum is league member Wendy Hendry. Hello Wendy. She will give each candidate reminders as they answer questions about the time remaining. And when time has elapsed, she'll be showing them 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and a stop sign. Candidates have been requested to end their sentence once the stop sign is displayed. After these opening statements, candidates will have 60 seconds to answer subsequent questions, which have been submitted through the registration process or developed by league members. The moderator will announce and enforce the time limits for each question. And lastly, this forum will close with candidates speaking in the reverse order from the opening statement. And that will be alphabetical, actually starting with Scott that time. Again, that last question that we're going to ask you to respond to in your closing statement is, what question do you wish you had been asked tonight and you weren't and why? And now let's officially begin. We will begin with each candidate's opening statement again responding to this question. What specifically qualifies you to be a Saratoga Union School District trustee? Candidates will have 90 seconds to respond and we will begin with Azida Weber.
Hi, I graduated from Monovista High School in Cupertino in 1999 and have local, regional, and international roots. I would say I'm qualified to serve on the Saratoga Union School Board of Trustees because I am a doctor of clinical psychology with experience working in three school districts. In particular, I ran the counseling office at Addison Elementary School in Palo Alto Unified School District. And I have experienced working collaboratively to balance rigorous academics in a top performing school district with early interventions for socio emotional wellbeing. I believe the Saratoga Union School District could use someone like me on the board as the community addresses anxieties around a shifting organizational structure as a result of COVID-19. My understanding of development would also be an asset to the district as the California Healthy Youth Act and the new sex ed curriculum rolls out. My approach is informed by Eric Erickson's theory of psychosocial development and specifically how the stages of development relate to identity formation in the teenage years. Hopefully I'll be able to talk more about that later tonight, but don't take my word for it. I'm here to answer your questions and address any concerns you may have. And in the end, you be the judge.
Thank you very much. Our next candidate is Sanita Verma. Sanita?
Thank you, League of Voters, for inviting me to this forum. I'm qualified for the SUST Board because I have been involved in the district for the past 18 years, from 2002 to 2019. With a master's degree in education and an educator in India, my passion and dedication are for quality and world-class education that produces well-rounded and confident compassionate students who will value diversity, empathy, and equity. I have served in every level of the school community, from classroom parent at Arkenot to extracurricular organizer at the high school, to school site council of both Arkenot and Redwood Middle School. I have a breadth of experiences that have come with long-term association with the school and a broader perspective, having seen my three children go through the arts schools. I have waited to run for the SUST Board until my kids graduated. So that if elected, my decision making as a board member will not be biased in any way. My kids should not benefit from my board position and nor should I be held back in taking a strong stand on issues I believe in. A board member is a trustee of the community. I will be a conduit for the concerns and interests of teachers, parents, and students. That trustee must be accessible and willing to collaborate with all members of the community. That includes all district staff. I'm committed to ensuring schools' vote tolerance and a celebration of diversity. I promise as your candidate that your voice and values will be heard to make the best decision possible.
Thank you very much. Our next candidate, Melissa Stennis. Melissa?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. When my kids asked me why I'm running, my reaction was because I know the district and I want to help. As a parent in this district for over seven years, my desire to help has motivated my work as a volunteer and a leader in the classroom, school-wide, district-wide, and on the Parcel Tax Oversight Committee. I am uniquely qualified for the school board because I have firsthand, current, relevant experience with our schools, our district leadership, our PTAs, and the Education Foundation. As a current member of the Superintendent Advisory Council and the district's Social Emotional Learning Committee, I've experienced working closely with our district leadership. These longstanding relationships I've built will be critical in helping the school board with their successful governance and adaptation to the challenges of COVID-19 and beyond. I have a deep understanding of the school district, its programs, budget, and operations. I understand we must work together for the safety of our school community, academic success, and social development of our students, and the fiscal health of our school district. I am prepared to make the transition from being a parent and volunteer to becoming a member of the Saratoga Union School District's governance team. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Melissa. Our next candidate Cecil Cohen Jonathan. Cecil?
Thank you, Eleanor, for hosting the webinar. And thank you, Melissa, Sanita, Azida, and Scott for your willingness to serve on the board. I'm an engineer, a chemist, and a mother. Our family moved to Saratoga in 2014 after searching for an excellent public school district with a diverse and small community. Our two daughters are attending Saratoga School in ninth grade and seventh grade. I received all public education in France from preschool to college and graduated with a PhD in physics and optics. For the last 20 years, I've been working in telecom as an engineer and a manager. I've been involved with the district since 2015 as a volunteer in the SUSD after-school orchestra program and also as the liaison between Saratoga Music Booster and the district. With the community support, I became a key player to propose orchestra program as an elective at the middle school and was also involved in the change in core curriculum. After almost two years of meeting with SMB, the board, and the district staff, orchestra became an elective in September 2017. This achievement shows my qualification of commitment, persistence, collaborative work, and leadership to serve the student, the parents, and the district staff. From my professional experience, I've gained the communication, teamwork, and integrity skills required to be an effective school board member. Finally, from my education in science and music, I can bring the leadership to ensure Saratoga School stays strong in academics, arts, and also in social emotional support. Thank you.
Thank you. And Scott Adler?
Thank you. Hi, I'm Scott Adler. I'm very excited to be running for Saratoga Union School District Governing Board, representing Foothill, Argonaut, Saratoga, and Redwood, which are amazing examples of high-quality public education. I've been actively involved in the district as a parent, volunteer, and elected officer for over nine years. The last three years, I served as vice president of the elementary school PTA, where I worked closely with parents, teachers, and administrators on numerous policies, issues, events, and activities. My wife Christie and I attended public schools. Our two children, aged 11 and 13, currently attend Redwood Middle and have been in the district since kindergarten. I have over 25 years' experience as an engineer and engineering manager at one of the biggest tech companies in the world, where I regularly make critical decisions affecting hundreds of millions of customers worldwide. I understand the importance of listening to all stakeholders, and in this case, its parents, teachers, administrators, students, and the community at large. I pride myself on listening, learning, doing, and finishing. I also fully embrace the district's mission that all cultures, ethnicities, genders, and sexual orientations, religions, and learning abilities are to be valued and respected. I have the experience necessary to effectively shape district policies through community involvement and fiscal accountability. To learn more about me and my campaign, please visit my website at scottforsusd.com. That's Scott, the number four, susd.com. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to share my values and experience with all of you. And to all of you watching, thanks for being involved in our political process.
Thank you very much. Thank you, candidates. We will now move on to questions submitted through the registration process or developed by league members. The candidates will have 60 seconds to respond to each question unless I say differently. The candidates will respond to these questions in a randomized order so that everyone has the opportunity to go first or last. And so we will begin with our first question. And I'll always mention who is going to start with the answering so that you have at least five or 10 seconds to think a little bit about your answer. So our first question is a very broad one. And Scott, we're going to begin with you, Scott Adler. And the question is, what is your vision for education in this community?
Great, thanks. That's a great question. My vision is about well-rounded education. I think we all know that we excel in this district in test scores and being at the top of our game when it comes to science, technology, math, that kind of thing. But I think we all are interested in making well-rounded students. So education is more than just what's in the book. It's doing things like band, sports, all of these extracurricular things, and also things that are sponsored by things like SEF, where you actually get PE and other things. So it's about educating the whole student, not just about scores. And my goal is to make sure those things are available in addition to our great clubs, things like the robotics club and the debate clubs and those things.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll hear from Azida Weber.
Hello. Thank you. So my vision for a Saratoga Union School District is to use adaptive learning for student-centered education so that education is centered on the student and not curriculum-based and that the children's culture gets to be a part of that. I also believe that the purpose of education and intelligence is character development. So I would like to focus on increasing extracurricular activities to enhance creativity and innovation and character development. I would also, to that end, like to work to reduce bullying in student and parent groups. I've heard that there are sometimes two channels of communication in parent groups. And so I would like to work to have better communication between different groups of parents.
Thank you very much. Next, Sanita Verma.
So my vision for education in this community is continued high academic success with global perspective. I would like to support and challenge every student with continued high academic success, balanced with social and emotional support that promotes collaboration, critical thinking, and sound judgment. We must create a vision and strategy, organize timeline for implementation and accountability, and have a mechanism for an open communication with all stakeholders. I would like to promote continued academic excellence through relevancy to promote students' success and prepare them for a global stage.
Thank you very much. Next, Melissa Stennis. Melissa?
Yes, I don't see that. Oh, there's the timer. Great. So my vision for education in our community is continuing the academics that our district is known for while we provide supports for the different styles of learners in our district. I also want to make sure that we are involving all the different stakeholders, whether it be parents, teachers, students, community at large, directing the direction of our curriculum and the choices that we're making. I think it's also important that we bring in SEL supports. I'm on the Social Emotional Learning, the district's Social Emotional Learning Committee. We have been evaluating different supports that we are looking at bringing into the schools. Really important right now with the distance learning modality that we're in so that we're able to support our students. And I think it's important also that we're working in our curriculum or building empathy for each other and for our community at large. Thank you.
Thank you. Cecil Cohen Jonathan?
I don't see the timer. My vision is to have excellent public education and in academics, artistic, and social emotional support. And it's also to have some differentiated programs so every student from special need, academically challenged, or academically advanced can thrive. I would also, my vision is also to have a school policy with no bullying, equality, and also having some information about any type of harassment. And also finally is to bring the parents and the students so they can take a more proactive role in the school policy, curriculum, and elective. And with the COVID-19 is to be able to have a strong remote learning program.
Thank you very much. And Cecil, you will be the first person to answer the next question. And something I also meant to mention to the candidates, sometimes when you're near the end of the questioning, you actually forget what the question was because it was a long time ago. So don't hesitate to ask me to repeat the question. I understand that. So our next question will begin with you, Cecil. It is, what do you consider the single most important issue facing the school district right now? Cecil?
The most important issue that I see is the remote learning due to the COVID-19. And I believe that, you know, a child can always catch up academically. However, socially emotionally, it's very challenging right now. And we've seen some increase is mental health in the school. And I think we have to work together to be able to find strong remote learning program and also to provide technological and emotional support to the student and also to the teacher. Because it's very challenging, not only for the student, but also for the teacher and also for the parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Adler?
I agree. I think if you talk about right now, right now, remote learning is the biggest deal, the whole COVID-19 pandemic. And in talking to teachers, they've told us that they are struggling in a lot of areas. They're struggling teaching reading. They're struggling teaching writing. They can't see the kids, what they're writing, and what is going on. So part of that is that this all caught us unaware and we don't have the technology in place to do all these things. We need better cameras, better microphones for remote learning. I've heard that the Chromebooks, we have some major issues with. And then there's also planning for how opening schools is going to work and how to make that transparent. I think parents are confused. I think the community is confused. There's the state government is defining a lot of the things. And we're sending out surveys and we don't really know how that's going to be responded to. And teachers are also unclear. Are they going to be back in school? Are we going to have one site open, multiple sites? And so I think there's a lot of confusion that needs to be cleared up there. So I think that's the biggest thing is how do we deal with that?
Thank you very much. Next will be Azida Weber. Azida, we can't hear you. You have to unmute yourself.
Hi there. Sorry about that. So I agree with the other two candidates. I think that the biggest issue facing the school district right now is the distance learning and the social emotional development that needs to happen for the children. As a doctor of clinical psychology who's worked in three school districts, Palo Alto, San Francisco, and Nevada, I think I have a unique background that can help support the community at this time, both the students, parents, and teachers. I trained under Dr. Bradford Wu of Community Youth Center of San Francisco. And he is an Asian advocacy and awareness organization. And I feel that I have the cultural sensitivity through my training and my background as an Iranian-American to provide the support that the community needs.
Thank you very much. Next, Sanita Verma.
So I agree with Scott, Azida, and Cecil. In current times, it is support for COVID-19. Our schools are doing virtual learning and also trying to figure out how to bring back students to campus in a safe and healthy environment. And teachers, you know, teachers are also struggling to see how to cope with virtual learning as well as if they need to come back to the campus. Our parents are in two minds, whether to send children to school or to continue with virtual learning. So in current times, I think this pandemic has taken over. And this is the number one issue in our schools, how to deal with it and how to make sure that everyone, if they come back to school, when and how, they come back in a very safe and healthy environment.
Thank you. And Melissa Stennis?
I'm going to agree with everyone else. Clearly, COVID distance learning is the biggest issue facing our schools at the moment. I think a critical component here is that it's an ever-evolving situation. COVID is not going to listen to any timeline that we establish for our schools. So it's making sure that the distance learning program that we're offering is as robust as it can be, that we are continuing to provide the technology supports needed by the students, by the teachers, by the staff to deliver the best academic program that we can, while also being mindful that there are social emotional issues going on. The way a seventh grader versus a third grader versus a kindergarten is able to interact with this modality are very different. And being separated from classmates is, you know, it's isolating. You don't get that connection. So we also need to be working to support our students through these challenges and also our teachers as well through these challenges because we've never done this before. We're, thank you.
Thank you. I also want to remind the candidates, particularly Sanita, make sure that you're facing front when you're speaking. When you turn your head too much to the side, some of your speech becomes a little bit difficult to hear. That's much better, like facing front, just like that. And you probably, yes, that's fine. You've probably detected the pattern that whoever goes last on the question becomes first on the next question. So Melissa, we'll be starting with you. Okay, this one comes in actually from parents and grandparents, okay? "As parents and grandparents of students, we are well aware of teaching disparities that exist from class to class. These have become magnified with the shift to online learning. How will the school board and administration adapt their oversight to ensure each student is receiving a quality and challenging curriculum from each of their classes?" So Melissa, we'll start with you.
Thank you. Wanting our students to get the best education when they go to school is the goal of every parent and grandparent. And I understand that what one teacher or one school offers may differ from what another school offers. And I know this year, in the spring, it was really sort of crisis teaching. And now, as we have headed back to school this year, the district has made an effort to provide the same curriculum across the board so that every second grade, fifth grade, eighth grade class is on the same page every day. I think it's important when we move through COVID and we're able to return to classes that we continue making sure that our curriculum is matched up between the different school sites and that, you know, the second grade curriculum is consistent between all the teachers so that we can ensure equity in the classes and make sure that every student in our district in second grade is receiving the same quality education. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we'll go to Cecil Cohen Jonathan. You have to unmute yourself.
Yes, so I think it's correct. There is diversity of teaching. And I think one way to overcome that is the board member, they need to work closely with the district and specifically the assistant superintendent. And also is to make sure to have professional development to the teacher so they can actually get together and share their knowledge and share also their feeling about the teaching. And I also think that we need to have a strong commitment as a board member and to support whatever is necessary to make sure that no teacher is left behind and no student is also left behind.
Thank you very much. Scott Adler?
Yeah, I think this is an interesting problem because everyone who has kids that have gone through this, you know the anticipation of the day you get your teacher assignments for the year, especially in elementary school. And you're like, there's word of mouth about teachers and things like that. And one of the things I think I would try to address is working with the administration. They're the ones who know about how they set up classes, how teachers are moved between grades, and those kinds of things, and learn from them how they measure teacher performance. Because honestly, I don't know exactly how it's measured. I know word of mouth as a parent. And I think walking into a district like this, I'd want to understand how do you tell if teachers need more development or they need some synergy with the other schools and that kind of thing. I think it's also very important to think about class makeup because there definitely are more challenging students and there are students that need more attention and they need to be balanced well. And I think that's an administration issue of how do you balance out the classes so that you don't have a better class and a worse class kind of, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next will be Azida Weber.
Hey there. I remember when I was at Addison Elementary in Palo Alto speaking with the school psychologists about how the students were going to get placed into the next grade level and how those decisions were made between the school psychologists and the principal. So that would, I had that in mind. As a board member, I would like to continue the practice that I have done in the past in the school districts, which is to observe in the classroom and see how things are going firsthand. I also believe in professional development for teachers. And I think that the social emotional support should not stop at the student level but should be extended to teachers, something I have experienced. And when I was at the Nevada Unified School District, we had a program where us And when I was at the Nevada Unified School District, we had a program where us counselors were available to the teachers to come to with, for emotional situations as well. So I would like to continue that in the Saratoga Union School District. To address the disparities.
Thank you very much. And Sunita Verma.
So every student is different and the way teachers approach students and their classes also different. And I think that professional development is very important. Students and teachers need to come on a, on the same page when they are teaching so that students can understand their teachers and the teachers can also teach according to the level of the students. And for this, the board should give, the school and the board should come together and figure out what are the best ways of imparting education to the children and what kind of assignments are okay, what kind of teaching methods are to be used. And that will make, you know, teaching synchronous amongst all the, I mean, like second graders and third graders and fourth graders across the three schools. And in, it will be better that way.
Thank you, thank you. And Sunita, we're going to begin with you on the next question. So let me move this down just a little bit. This is kind of a long question. So the Saratoga School District has implemented the California Healthy Youth Act, was known as AB 23329. Some parts of that curriculum are considered by some in the community to be quite controversial, particularly topics in teen talks and positive prevention pluses curriculum. How would you propose providing parents with more transparency and easier access to the complete curriculum, including the syllabus, handouts, videos, and slides, so that they are more informed?
Thank you. So it is very important for parents to understand what is in the curriculum for their children. Because parents are, ultimately, it's the parents and the student and their children who are affected by it. So I would say parents should be, you know, informed through regular emails or, you know, teachers can have one-on-one talks with the teacher, with the parents. And sometimes your ethnicity, sometimes your diversity, sometimes your background comes in way of it. So it is better that the school district understands where the student is coming from. And based on that, you know, the teachers and the school can inform and keep the parents updated on what is going on in the schools, in the curriculum or in the pattern that they are teaching the students.
Thank you, thank you. Next, Melissa Stennis.
Thank you. I think this is a topic that every parent has concern about and wants to make sure that our students are getting what we feel is the best education. My son went through the curriculum, my older son went through the curriculum two years ago. And at that time, weeks ahead of time, the curriculum was provided to us. It was in the, the school office, we could come look at it at any time we wanted during the school day. What I really got out of this program as a parent was that it really provided facts. It gave, gave the students the facts and the opinions, the values, sort of the, the family input that was left up to the parents to provide that context for the students. So it wasn't saying one thing was good or bad, but it was, it was really, okay, these are the facts that we're going to present about, you know, sex ed, human biology. And then it was up to the parents to give it context. And I think that's really a great model because you're giving information and then the parents who have had the opportunity to view the information, the curriculum ahead of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Cecil Cohen-Johnathan.
So I agree that, you know, each parent wants to get informed about what's, what's going on in the school. And, and actually, I would encourage the, the parents to send email to the board, to attend board meetings and also to, to be openly concerned if something happened. And on the board side, I think the board needs to be transparent about the change in curriculum. They need to have maybe some tunnels so they can explain the, the change in curriculum or if they want to add new one. And I also think that the students, they are allowed to also give their opinion and tell if they're, how they feel about, you know, some of these controversial questions about, specifically about the sex ed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll hear from Scott Adler.
I have to agree with what Melissa said. The, the experience I had in, with both my kids in fifth grade was phenomenal in terms of it was all about facts. And the, the way the, the school got this curriculum out to us was some through emails, some through slides. But the best thing we had was one of the expert consultants came and held a seminar and explained what the methodology is, what, how they're teaching facts. And it was actually kind of an interesting meeting because there were some parents there who said, well, what if I disagree with this? And, and the consultant said, these are facts, we're teaching facts, we're not teaching, you know, opinions and things there. So, and, and like Melissa said, it was up to parents to impart your opinions and, you know, morality and those kinds of things on top of this. To the specific question of how it gets across, that seminar was probably the most valuable thing, but also posting the slides from that seminar. And emails are okay, but it's better to have things that you can pull on request and point someone to a webpage. That's the direction I would go.
Thank you very much. Azita Weber.
Hi, I understand this is an issue that's been debated in the school district for a few years now and that there's a lot of anxieties around it. So I think that there should be, that definitely the curriculum should be available to parents ahead of time. They should be able to see it. And I also would like to say that there should be proper channels for group discussions to contain the anxieties that might be coming up in the parent groups as this curriculum is rolled out. It is a new curriculum and I can empathize with some of those anxieties that are coming up. And as a board member, I would like to provide a proper channel for discussion around them. I also think it's important to understand, not all, for the parents to understand not only the curriculum, but how the curriculum lines up with the psycho-social developmental models and theories of identity development in youth.
Thank you very much. And Azita, we'll begin with our next question with you. If you are in conflict with the community on an issue, is it more important to follow your instincts or the wishes of the majority of the community? Azita?
Yes, it's definitely more important to follow the wishes of the community. I am a representative of the community, I'm not representing myself. As a lobbyist for the California Psychological Association for many years, I have experience as a constituent of my organization to lobby bills and to politicians. And I always represented my organization, I have a history of doing so, rather than my own personal opinions and biases.
Thank you very much. Next, Sunita Verma.
So my view is that every opinion is important. We should always look at the larger picture. And it is, it's a democratic country, every opinion should be welcomed. And we can always agree to disagree on it. We should always look at the pros and cons of a, of an issue and come to, you know, put aside our egos and our different opinions and come together and solve that problem. There is nothing that cannot be solved through talks. So we can always sit and understand the issue, understand the different points of view and come to a consensus. And that's how, you know, we can always solve something, solve an issue. And I would, I would always debate with it and tell my point of view as well as understand others' point of view and, you know, come meet midway on any issue.
Thank you. Next, Melissa Stennis.
Thank you. When we elect somebody, we want to know that we're placing our trust in somebody who is going to represent how we feel about an issue. And I think it's important for board members to remember they're elected by and responsible to the constituents. So I definitely believe that your instincts can guide you to gather more information, but it is important, it is always important for the, for the board to consider the, the wishes of the community. On, I think during this process, no matter what direction you go in terms of gathering information, it's important the process is transparent, that there's consistent and open communication with, with the community. And as decisions are being made, that you're considering every member of our community, every, every student who's going to be impacted by the decision, how it's going to impact the teaching staff and the, and the administration. And then also considering that every decision you make has, has multiple steps of implication. So you're really thinking through how the, how these decisions are going to impact one, two, three steps down the line. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Cecil Cohen-Johnathan.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes. If you are in conflict with the community on an issue, meaning you, meaning the board, is it more important to follow your instincts or the wishes of the majority of the community?
So as Melissa said, a board member is elected by the community. And, and as a board member, I will take every comment from the community very seriously. And I think as a board member, I will also consult with the other board members because we are a team and we have to make the decision as a team. And we have to be transparent about the decision we are, we are making. And I will also make sure to have some meeting with the, the parent who has some issue and also some conflict. Because I think a board member, we have to remember that a board member represents the community. And, and, and it's important that we, we take, we take every parent and every student very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. And Scott Adler.
So I think it's really interesting that the question says, use your instincts, because that's what I don't agree with, with there. I don't think any of the decisions should be made based on your instincts. I think the decision should be made based on facts. And if, looking at the facts, you disagree with what many people in the community don't agree with, then you have to understand why you're disagreeing with that. It's, if you're just going by instinct and shooting from the hip, I don't think you're doing the right job. You are, as other people have said, representing the community. So either there's a lack of communication going on, maybe there's something where you feel like, as a board member, I know something that other people don't know, and that shouldn't really be the case. So there needs to be more transparency on, why do I feel this way about it? And I, I don't feel like I'll be going into this job trying to use my instincts. I'll be going into this job trying to use my ability to learn from people and make valued judgments based on what the experts tell me about different things and not an instinctual reaction.
Thank you. And next, we're going to stop for just a moment here. And as I mentioned in the pre-session, I'm going to be asking you the next two questions about your support for various state propositions that can impact, of course, your school district. So the first question is, please raise your hand when I'm finished. If you support or supportive of the California Ballot Proposition 15, also known as the Schools and Community First Ballot Measure, that the league supports and would create a split role property tax and generate additional money for the town and for schools. So if you're supportive of that proposition, would you raise your hand and keep it up for like two seconds so we can see? Okay. Thank you, so the community can see. All right. And the next one that I'm going to read you, similar. Please raise your hand if you are supportive of Proposition 16 that the league supports and which would amend the state's constitution to allow the use of race, gender, color, ethnicity, and national origin in public education, public employment, and public contracting. So if you're supportive of that proposition, would you raise your hand? Okay, I see two people. All right, thank you very much. Well, now move on to our next question and we're going to start with you, Scott. Let me get down here. This is a two-part question, so I'm going to give you, Wendy, I'm going to give them 90 seconds on this because I think you need a little bit more time to really adequately answer it. With one or two meetings a month, all school boards are limited in what they can do. How do you think the board should decide on what's most important? And then how can a board assess if its goals are being accomplished and its policies carried out? So Scott?
That's very interesting. So how can you assess it is, is the second half of this. And you have to come up with what you consider like your success criteria. And that's, that's what a board has to set up in the beginning is say, are we trying to roll out new curriculum? Are we trying to grow enrollment? What, what are those things? And set it up in the beginning. You have to have things that are measurable metrics. So you can say, we're going to try to grow enrollment by this percentage or we're going to try to match the high school curriculum at this percentage and roll these out at certain times. For the limited number of board meetings, that's a really tough problem. I think working on alternate ways of communicating while still satisfying the Brown Act, I think is useful. Can you have asynchronous kinds of discussions that are still public to discuss things outside of just straight board meetings? I think there's some technology answers we could do there where you could have things like shared chatroom style discussions that are open to the public so that we can have discussions about options without having to wait until that board meeting. Plus, board office hours are a great time to hear feedback from people and there isn't as many limitations on the amount of office hours you can have for the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Azita Weber.
Can you repeat the question again?
Sure. And let me go back here. With one or two meetings a month, all school boards are limited in what they can do. How do you think the board should decide on what's most important? And then how can a board assess if its goals and policies are being accomplished or carried out?
Okay, so I agree with you on the first statement that it's hard to accomplish much in two meetings a month. To focus on what is most efficient, the board has to prioritize its values. And then it has to do like a project management to say, and then the part of the project management is coming up with criterias that are going to be measured. This, and then that's how you will see if you're meeting your goals or not. And these goals relate back to the values of the district and the priorities of those values. This is, it will also require a lot of communication outside of board meetings. This is something I'm familiar with as chairperson-elect for the California Psychological Association, Division III Industrial and Organizational Psychology.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Sunita Verma.
So the board should prioritize the items that are most important, the issues that need most attention. So they, you know, based on that, address those problems and come, you know, inform the community, inform the stakeholders, what is going on. And they can also know, get a feedback by doing regular surveys or hold office hours or send emails, questionnaire and get the feedbacks to know what the, you know, what the stakeholders think. So that is the way that our issues can be solved with one or two meetings that is going on. And if it is, if they feel that this is not, though, it's not going the way that it should be, maybe, you know, prolong those, you know, take it over to the next session. But to solve, we need to get regular feedbacks and inform our community members what actions are being taken and how they are being taken and why they are being taken. So that the community... taken, and why they are being taken. So that the community and the stakeholders can get informed feedback to the board.
Thank you. Next will be Melissa Stennis.
Thank you. I think as anybody who has attended any of the recent board meetings know, there's a lot that happens in a board meeting. And yes, there's a lot of ground to cover in one or two meetings a month. I know that for the school boards, they they set up a calendar, a governance agenda, sorry, governance calendar, where they prioritize what what needs to be focused on and when. There's also government mandated items that must be discussed at certain times. So I know through building that calendar, you are able to set a framework for what's important and how you're going to, how you're going to discuss these items. The board sets goals. The board sets goals for themselves. They set boards for the superintendent. And through going back and measuring against those goals for for the board and for the superintendent, you can do a self-assessment to see how well you are meeting the goals that you've set for yourself. If there's something that is just bigger or more involved, or, you know, is is just bigger than what is able to be addressed in one or two sessions a month, that's when you can go into something like a study session, like the social emotional learning committee that I'm on, where you you open it up to the community in terms of bringing people on, community members, teachers, administration, to really get to the heart of a matter so that you can can focus and spend more time really understanding an issue so that you can, that committee can bring recommendations back to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. And Cecil Cohen Jonathan.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes. With one or two meetings a month, all school boards are limited in what they can do. How do you think, or what would you propose? How should the school board decide on what's most important? And then, how can a board assess if its goals are being accomplished and its policies carried out?
Yeah, so I think recently, if the community has attended some of the board meetings, some of the board meetings have been really tense. And and I think it's, we are living in a very unprecedented time. And I think the board, they set the, they set the the goals and the priority for for the district. And so they have to be able to evaluate the priority and the goals during the school year. What I think is the, for the agenda, they have topics they have, they need to discuss. However, they also need to take into account the public comments. And a public comment is three minutes, and they have to be able to listen. And also, that will help the boards to be able to implement, and also put in place for the next agenda. And I think also, the the board member need to be, to have a better communication with the community, not only for, you know, the the success, but also the the budget, but also for the challenges.
Thank you very much. And we'll have one more community question, and then we'll be moving on to our closing. So this last question here is, how would you handle requests if approached by an individual or a special interest group? And we'll begin with you, Cecil.
So as a as a board member, I will, I will look at the the request first, and I will not say no or yes. I will actually consult with the the four other board members, because I think it's, the decision is actually, has to be a decision from from the board. And I will do some research, and I think the board will do some research. And I think we look at about the request, we look if the request have some some facts and some very, and then if it's good, then we can, we can actually make the decision. As as a as a board member, we can make the decision to accept or decline the request.
Thank you very much. Scott Adler.
So I kind of lean on some of the the experience I've had in business conduct in the past. And one of the things you have to understand as soon as requests come in, and you're in a position to make decisions, is that they need to go through the proper channels. And if if it's not the proper channels to come directly to me, then I would have to direct whoever's asking me for stuff. I could give them maybe information about what they're asking about. But I would encourage them to go through whatever transparency would need to be made in that situation. So if it's the kind of request where I need to disclose that a special interest came to me, that would be the important thing to do. If I need to, if, you know, I would, I could listen to what they're saying and and explain to them, this is how you do the formal request for this kind of thing, come to a public hearing, come to office hours, those kinds of things where the entire board or a portion of the board is there. If it's just an offside thing, it may not seem appropriate. So I would want to make sure that I'm doing the right thing and and transparency is that everyone knows where decisions are being made, what information is getting into it.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll hear from Azita Weber.
Hello. So if a special interest groups came to me with a request, I would listen to the request. I think that every request deserves to be listened to. And I would evenly space my attention to everyone who makes me a request of me as a board member, not give more or less attention to someone based on their interest group. Then I would discuss this with the board, and, you know, have transparency with the board. And I would also encourage the interest group to come to a board meeting and to speak publicly about their request. Then personally, I would, my process is I would come up with three options of how to relate to the request after, you know, processing this with the board, and hopefully, the community. And then I would come up with the pros and cons of each of these options. And I would write them down, and I would wait three days before making my decision.
Thank you very much. And next, we'll hear from Sanita Verma.
So Saratoga community is a very diverse community.
Sanita, would you face front so that we make sure you're coming across clearly? Yeah, better, better.
Our Saratoga community is a very diverse community, and people have all kinds of, you know, they have their issues. And if they have any thing that they would like the board and the school to understand, it is perfectly fine. The board should listen to every individual, every group. As a school, as a school and as a, you know, district, it is our, it is our duty to understand what people want. So I would listen to them, understand the pros and cons, understand what they want. Is it within the framework of our school district? Is it something that they are asking that that is supported or not supported? So we all the pros and cons do, and like Scott said, do, you know, involve the public, make it very transparent, that this group is interested in this particular thing, and then come to a to a decision.
Okay, thank you very much. And now Melissa Stennis.
Thank you. Pardon me. So if an individual, special interest group, whomever brings a concern or something to the board, the first thing that needs to be done is bring it to the attention of the superintendent, so that it can be agendized, and the whole board can be made aware of it. That way, it can be discussed at a board meeting. And through that discussion and through having it on the agenda, that that makes sure that we can hear all points of view about an issue. It's important that when when making decisions, and whether they, whether it's an issue that's been brought up by an individual, a group of individuals, a special interest group, that we consider all the moving pieces, that we consider all points of view about something, and evaluate who and who would not benefit from this decision. And is it equitable for all the students in our district? What are the impacts downstream for staff, teachers, students, everyone involved? And making sure that we're looking at the whole picture, we're being transparent in the process, and that we're just making sure we have as much information as we can to evaluate that that request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Candidates, that was your last question from the community. So we're now moving on to basically the last question that's becoming your closing statement. And we are going to go in the reverse order from the opening statement. So we'll be starting with Scott Adler, and the last candidate in this round then will be Azita Weber. So we, and I think you recall that you were told this question in your paperwork, we'd like you to respond to, what question do you wish you had been asked tonight, and why? And this is an opportunity for you to communicate things perhaps that you want to bring out about you and your campaign that somehow didn't come out in the questioning. So again, what question do you wish you had been asked tonight, and why? And you'll have 90 seconds to respond, and we'll begin with Scott Adler.
Thanks, Eleanor. So I wish I had been asked what I've learned so far from your experience running for school board. I've learned so much about the district beyond being a parent, volunteer, and PTA board member. I've talked with so many community members, educators, and school board members, and gained valuable insight into a variety of issues affecting the district. Since entering into this election, I've been able to hear from current and former school board members of both the SUSD and the High School District to get their perspective on what it means to be on the board, and the challenges they faced as new board members. I learned about navigating the challenge of going from parent and volunteer to evaluating and instituting district-wide policies. I've met with many community members, including leaders of the Saratoga Education Foundation and other volunteer organizations, where I learned their viewpoints and priorities. I've also had the pleasure of meeting with many of the teachers in the district from all four schools, where they have shared the challenges they faced firsthand with distance learning. I've recently been involved with a group of remarkable caring parents working for better transparency and education regarding sexual harassment, bullying, and discrimination in our district. I've learned that we have highly qualified experts throughout the district, our administrators who know detailed budgeting, managing facilities, enrollment, special education, and more, our passionate teachers who want to be more involved in evaluating curriculum and planning for distance learning, and parents who care so much about educating children and raising good people. The bottom line is, I learned that our whole community cares deeply about education. I know I will continue to learn and do so much more if elected to serve on the board. I also learned I have an amazing group of friends, neighbors, and community members who have supported me. Thank you for your time and effort to get the word out about my campaign. And thanks to the League of Women Voters for letting me take part in this forum.
Thank you very much. Our next candidate is Cecil Cohen Jonathan.
I would like the community to ask me why I'm running. And there are like a few things. First of all, I want to be part of the reopening of of the school in a very safe condition. So I think it's the first thing to do is to define what safe condition mean, and also is to be able to have the confidence from the teacher and from the family. So they they know that it's safe to return to in-person class. And I think that I'm also running because I think that in-person class are very important. And I would like to see that we can have some habit option, and also some where we have more synchronous classes, and you can have some live streaming classes. And and also, I think that I am running too, because I've been in, you know, I grew up in France, and I have, I have a full public education, and I strongly believe that public school are the best foundation to a, to prepare the children to ready to challenge the world. And also, I want to make sure that the student and parents, they have a voice.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Melissa Stennis. Melissa?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters, my fellow candidates, our community, family, students, and teachers. I am amazed by the resiliency and creativity I've seen during this immense challenge we are all facing. I wish you had asked, why am I the clear choice for the school board? During my extensive involvement with our district, I have worked tirelessly to educate the hearts and minds of our students, and to build community and connection for our students and families. With so much uncertainty surrounding COVID and reopening, we need, we need dedicated leadership that knows our schools, our administration, and the challenges facing our students and teachers on a daily basis. I have this leadership experience. I have established working relationships with our school and district administrators, and I have firsthand knowledge of distance learning as a current parent at the elementary and middle school levels. It is vital. We have dedicated compassionate leadership that is well-informed, supportive of public education with no agenda, and committed to representation for all members of our community. It is vital. We have transparent leadership with deep, extensive, and relevant understanding of our district. I am that leader, and I am excited and prepared to help our district rise to the challenges of COVID and beyond in meaningful ways that support our students, teachers, and staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Sanita Verma. Sanita?
One question I wish you had asked is, what have I learned in my 18 years, both as an active volunteer and as a parent? And what I would tell you is that children are incredibly intercous. In other words, they will figure it out. Students do best at things they actively participate in and enjoy doing. Given the nature of where we are, there is already substantial pressure on students to pursue what is considered proven academic tracks, and to put their emphasis on that. In my time here, I have seen big shift to adding emphasis on STEM, which is great. And yes, students should be well-versed in science and math. But as parents, we should encourage students to explore a wider array of opportunities to experiment, experience, and see what they enjoy. That when you love what you do, and you pursue your passions, work doesn't stay as work. We should focus on developing students into well-rounded, confident, and happy young adults. Especially at a young age, we should encourage and give them a vast exposure to experiences such as volunteering, finance, music, writing, cultural exposures, public speaking, and leadership skills, which we should show them, that how to be resilient in the face of adversity. Children should be empathetic and believe on how you get something with integrity and ethics is something more important than the outcome. It was Eleanor Roosevelt who said, that the future belongs to those who believe in the beauty of their dreams. To parents, I say, don't worry. What I have learned is that our students will surprise us, and they will, when they believe in the beauty of their dreams. Thank you, League of Voters.
Thank you. And Azita Weber?
Hi, I wanted to say thank you to everyone who tuned in and for the attention at this forum. I really appreciate the opportunity to talk about my campaign. An informed voter is an intelligent voter, and I appreciate the opportunity to answer one of my own questions right now. And that question is, how can the school board work with the city council for a more efficient local government in our community? And so as a candidate who's been endorsed by John Inks, the former mayor of Mountain View, I've had the opportunity to speak with him about how some ways that the school board can work with the city council. And some of those ways are around the use of parks, and around traffic, once a school reopens again. And he had some other suggestions. So that's what I wanted to raise up. I think it's really important that our, the parts of our local government work together, and that they're not separated from each other, and that the conversations are occurring between the city council and the school board on a regular basis, so that we have a more efficient local government. I am the only candidate who has a child that's going to go through all levels of education in the Saratoga Union School District. And I encourage voters to check out my website and cast a wide net when voting in this election. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank all the candidates for coming tonight and participating. We wish you well in your campaign, and we greatly respect your candidacy for these very important offices. Thank you again for your participation tonight. Audience members, we would also like to thank you for your attendance. We hope you have learned a lot tonight that will help you make your decision when voting. The League would also like to remind everybody to vote by November 3. We are so lucky here in Santa Clara County, and actually, in all of California, that every registered citizen that every registered citizen is able to vote by mail. You will be receiving your mail-in ballot, I just got mine today, in early October and can vote by completing the ballot and mailing it back in the provided postage-paid envelope. You can complete your ballot and drop it off at any secure vote box located throughout the county. Or you can go to a vote center to drop off your ballot. You could even vote in person there if you wanted to. You can get a replacement ballot if you need it. You can even register to vote conditionally on that day. For additional information on candidates and ballot measures, we'd like to recommend that you can take a look at the League of Women Voters of Southwest Santa Clara Valley's website. You can look at all voter servicing events that have taken place in the county by going into the county website. And two organizations or two resources that I consider outstanding are VotersEdge.org, which I hope all of the candidates tonight have submitted their information to that. You can go into Voters Edge, type in your address and your zip code, and you get a copy of your individual ballot. And you can click on every single name and every single measure and you can get additional information there. So it's an excellent resource. And Ballipedia is another one that provides very good unbiased information, again, about the ballot measures. So we hope that you will take advantage of that and make yourself as well-informed as you can. And again, the League wishes and hopes everybody will vote by November 3rd. Thank you for attending tonight. Good night. And so we'll wait for, Sophia will let us know.